I call this August meeting of the Paducah Planning and Zoning Commission to order. I want to welcome all of you and ask that you stand with us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Summer, call the roll, please.
Mr. Benbury?
Here.
Mr. Bradford?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Ms. Schramke?
Here.
Mr. Shadle?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Chair Casillas?
Here.
We have several minutes that have not been approved from past meetings, and Mr. Shadle is going to read each one of those.
First one, I move that the reading of the minutes for June 17th, 2018 be waived, and that the minutes of said meeting is prepared by the Secretary and be approved as corrected.
Second. Second by Schramke. Are there any more corrections or comments for these minutes? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye.
Then, the next minute's motion, please.
I move the reading of the minutes for July 2nd, 2018 be waived, and that the minutes of said meeting be prepared, as prepared by the Secretary, be approved as corrected.
Second.
Second by Wade. Are there any more comments or corrections for these minutes? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye.
And Mr. Shadle, our final motion on minutes, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for July 16th, 2018 be waived, and that the minutes of said meeting, as prepared by the Secretary, be approved as written.
Second.
Second by Benbury and Bradford. Are there any more comments or corrections? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye.
Now, we move into our business portion. Ms. Schramke, I believe you have our first case to consider tonight.
I do. I move that this commission receive and file the application of McMurray and Livingston Building, LLC, for the proposed re-subdivision of property located at 201 Broadway. I further move that the requested waiver of the public caring and dedication of streets be given, and approval of the submitted plat be granted.
Second.
Second by Shadle.
This is a condominium plat for the McMurray and Livingston. They're going to occupy floors one and two. There is a studio apartment in the back of the ground floor. Floors three, four, and five will all be condominiums, and Mr. Tosh is here to answer any further questions you may have.
Has there been a condominium? I thought that we had seen this before.
It was constructed, I don't know, I'm going to say, it may years ago. Most of this construction was done at that time, but to my knowledge, it never went through planning as a condo. We did talk to the previous owners about doing that at one time, but we didn't.
Maybe that was the discussion, because I was thinking, well, one of the partners occupies one of the units now, and I thought they had split that off. Apparently, they have not.
I believe it was apartments. It was set up as apartments, I think.
Thank you for correcting my bad memory.
The, I did want to question, there are doors on the third, fourth, and fifth floor in the back. They do go out to the fire escape, I believe, do they not?
Yes.
It's not, the fire escape isn't shown on the plat, but I just wanted to make sure people knew that that was there.
Yes.
The steps that go from the main floor to the second floor, pardon my voice, when you walk in off Broadway, those steps can still be open up through there?
Yeah, there's steps there, goes up into a mezzanine area, and then there's steps from the mezzanine on up into the second floor area, and that's all occupied is the same unit, even though they're on two, two levels.
I know that the door to the elevator is on the same side as the door that you come in on off of Second Street.
Second Street, aye.
That's still where, will the elevator open into each of the individual condominium, or will it open into a common?
It opens into a common area.
Okay.
And that access from Second Street, that doorway you're referring to, that is a common area that it comes into there where the elevator flows from.
And how will the rooftop be treated? Will there be access by all owners?
Yes, there, there's access by elevator and by stairs to the kind of patio area there on the roof, and it's for, for all occupants.
Does the elevator go to the roof? Oh, it does. I didn't think it did. I thought it stopped.
It didn't used to.
Okay. Yeah, I know it didn't used to, because I've walked that last flight of stairs.
Well, I may need to be corrected. I know that I've never opened the doors up there, but it may just be the shaft portion that's up there. It may just be the stairs from the fifth floor up that's only access, rather than an actual stair, elevator.
I couldn't tell you.
I do know that there is a housed-in structure up there for the elevator, so it may just be the workings of it.
Okay, I'm still confused on where the elevator opens. Come for just a second. I'm looking at the fourth floor plan. Does the elevator not open here? So this whole area is just around the elevator?
This, this actually opens out into the unit.
It opens directly into the unit.
This does open directly into the unit.
That was the question I was asking. The stairway comes up, you have a door here, but then this opens directly into the unit on both, on the third, fourth, and fifth floors. Okay. That's all right. I just wanted to make sure I understood. It's showing the elevator going up there, but.
Yeah, it may just be shaft.
I think it was a shafting mechanism.
Yeah, I think it probably is.
I've always had to climb those stairs. It's a beautiful view.
Yes, it is. Really nice. Does anyone else have any questions, comments? Anything you'd like to ask? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford, do you have the second item of business of 3501 Pecan Drive?
I move that this commission adopt a resolution approving the final subdivision for property located at 3501 Pecan Drive.
Second.
Second by Schramke.
This came as a preliminary before the Planning Commission, I believe, on June 18th, for the preliminary plat, and this is the final. Staff did have some comments which are reflected on the final plat, being all buildings require a finished facade along any public right-of-way. All mechanical, all mechanical equipment shall be screened. Building and roadway access shall be exclusively from Colonial Court, and the existing entrance off Highway 62 shall not be utilized. All those changes have been made. Engineering has looked at this, and, and they're fine with the stormwater and roadway plans, so we're ready for a positive recommendation to City Commission.
You said one of the recommendations was all access off Colonial Court, so is there any allowed access off Pecan Court? For lot number six.
Let me touch on that for a minute, Josh, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Since, since then, I had a conversation with engineering about that, because early on in the planning, which was, you know, three months ago or whatever, one of the concern of the developer, we definitely wanted to have Pecan Drive, or have access off the back of Lot 3, off old Pecan Drive.
Right, yeah.
And it's only affects that one there, and I talked to engineering about it earlier this week, and, and we got that addressed to where they are okay with that. I think at the time when we, the idea was, there were some concern, are there going to be buildings facing the highway, are there going to be buildings facing Pecan Drive? And the intent was, we, we want all the addressing and the main entries being off Colonial Court. But say someone builds on Lot 3, their building's going to face Colonial Court, but they may want to back access. It's there, why not use it? So, that.
Well, and the same is true of Lot 6. If someone wanted, you know, access off of Pecan Court.
Pecan Court, and there's already a concrete curb cut apron for that, so.
Well, Pecan Court is still a dedicated city roadway, right?
Yes, Pecan Drive, the old Pecan Drive is too, technically.
That's what I wanted to make sure of.
Well, then, the other lots, could they use the, the exit off of Lot 3? I mean, if they went around the circle or do whatever, could they come out through that land there? I mean, is that a?
That's not the, it wouldn't be intended to. Lot 2, the only access would be off the new Colonial Court.
But they could?
No.
Well.
Not without an, no, not without an easement or something across Lot 3. I don't believe anybody would, I don't think that's.
Okay, so Lot 3's not going to have like a drive?
No, no.
I think, didn't you say primarily, it would be just like, like, let's say, if the, the people who worked at the business wanted to park behind the building and didn't want to, you know, they didn't want to build access all the way around, they could have access here to park behind the building.
Exactly.
But see, my, my question was, you know, are we going to do this?
I don't think so. So is this? This is like utility right-of-way, isn't it? The, the, she's looking at these dotted right-of-ways.
No, it's a public utility easement. That's just an easement along the right-of-way there, just for utilities only, not, not a driveway.
Right. Okay. And my question had to do with all buildings facing, all buildings require a finished facade along any public right-of-way, but I think basically, we're really hoping they're going to, some of them may want to front on Alvin Berkeley Drive, but some of them, obviously 3 can't. I mean, they don't have any frontage.
I believe the intent is to face the main entry towards the interior road, but the idea of having a finished facade around the back to where it might look like a front, you know, to where it doesn't look bad with all your.
Right.
Utilities and all.
Exactly.
Thank you. I appreciate you putting in there, the existing entrance off Highway 62 shall not be utilized, because that could be very dangerous. Are there any other comments? Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye.
Mr., oh, this is Mr. Bradford, I'm sorry. Mr. Wade, do you have 1140 Broadway, please?
I'm not so situated.
I move that the Planning Commission recommended to the City Commission that case ZON 2018-062 pertaining to 1140 Broadway not be rezoned to the M2 zoning classification. I further move that the following findings of fact be adopted. The proposed M2 zone is not in compliance with the City Paducah Comprehensive Plan. There have not been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area involved, which were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan, and which have substantially altered the basic characteristics of the area. The B3 zoning designation is appropriate, and the proposed M2 zoning would be inappropriate based on the existing zoning being in compliance within the City of Paducah Comprehensive Plan, and major economic, physical, and social changes have not been made pursuant to KRS 100.213. The M2 zoning for this, this parcel could be considered spot zoning, which is not typically supported by the Kentucky courts, as shown in Mathis versus Hannah. The rezoning of this parcel could constitute, or could, excuse me, could create noxious use in the future, which could lead to detrimental views in the sheds of Broadway and the proposed surrounding land uses.
Second.
Second by Benbury.
Mr. and Ms. Durham is here, the applicant, so I guess I'll explain the staff report, then I'll, if y'all want to speak after that. Staff did have some concerns with this application that was laid out in your findings of fact. But what is proposed is a 9,200 square foot climate-controlled storage building with three entrances off of Broadway. There are a couple of variances being requested along with this, which is permitted by state statute and by our ordinance to grant some variances of a four foot, four feet on each side. And it's shown on the site, plan 15 foot for front yard, but staff would rather have a 25-foot front yarding, so people can pull in front and have their entire vehicle off Broadway, so they don't get hit or block the sidewalk. When we actually get into the zoning part of it, the future land use map, which is, is adopted as part of the comprehensive plan, shows that parcel to remain commercial, not industrial. When you look north on Broadway, you can see city, the city skyline five blocks away. In the future, it could open up the door to salvage yards, kennels, things like that. Of course, we don't know that. We don't have a crystal ball 20 years down the road, but when we look at in the future through the comprehensive plan, we want to make sure our view sheds are maintained and things of that nature. And what I'd also mentioned in here was the case Mathis versus Hannan, and that was actually here in Paducah for the old Hannan Plaza, the first time it was going to be rezoned back in 1957. The Court of Appeals did strike that case down as spot zoning whenever the first application came through to rezone the Hannan Plaza parcel to be one. And the actual language that they included in that finding was spot zoning is generally frowned upon by the courts, so I wanted to include that language as well. That wraps up everything that I have, but Mr. and Ms. Durham is here to add to anything that they had liked.
Do you ask questions, or we just? Did you all see the plan? Did you get that, the drawing of it?
I mean, it wasn't by any means, exactly. We just weren't sure if we could even, you know.
Oh, sure.
Why M2 zoning? Why, why go to that designation?
I don't know if we have to do that to build. I was, my understanding is you have, you can't build this type of building. You can't have storage. I mean, climate-controlled storage is something basically completely new, and the zoning was put in place, I don't know, 50, 75 years ago. There weren't nice climate-controlled storage places, so.
It's not meant to be like an industrial storage. It's just more of a content storage, and we currently have that kind of in the location we are. Like, in the back of our building, we store like contents because of our business, so we actually need that. You know, we need more space, and we kind of want to make our block look better. That's my goal. I want that whole area to look good. I want it all to look great, and I want something historically accurate that looks like it just blends in with my building. We have so many commercial properties that on, up and down Broadway, I mean, it's, I don't think there is a need to build any more commercial buildings, and this would be something that would be really part of, something that we can use for our business, but also we feel like is beneficial to other people, and it's not, it's not really industrial. It's more a climate-controlled storage, where you'd be able to pull your car through and drop off your contents. We own a building in Murray. We do the same thing, and there's such a lack of it here that we drive contents all the way from our building, all the way to Murray, even for like a bank in town and those kind of things. There's not a place to put stuff. So we just kind of thought, we already, we already need this. We want to make our area look better, you know, we want it to be still a nice facade from the outside. And it really doesn't fit into what they say the storage unit is. You know, climate-controlled storage is not an industrial use. It's something different than what the classification says.
It's not warehousing.
No, we're not, yeah. It'd be personal contents, maybe.
Is your property adjacent to this?
We took the, what's it known as? The Salvation Army building, and we fixed that up.
So we have one whole lot line that we share.
We have Broadway Interiors and Serb Pro, and so we took that building.
Renovated that.
Renovated that completely, and then, and then Chip Wynn was moving. He asked if we would want to get the lot next to it, and so we purchased that from Mr. Wynn, and then, and just.
So it would almost look like an extension of our building. We want it to just look like a nice brick building, try and clean up that area. I mean, that's ultimately my goal, for it to keep on going down Broadway and all the.
I understand that, but let me clarify my thinking here. So we're asking for a zone change. What they sound, what they're describing sounds lovely, but we then have opened that whole thing about, we can have that zone, we can have those utilities, with no restrictions of the next one looking like theirs. Okay?
That's correct, and Mr. Wade, if I could answer your initial question about why M2 zoning, that is half a block away where Paducah built is now, on the south side of Kentucky. That's why that zone was chosen, because it was the nearest industrial-type zone.
But would not M1, light industrial, accomplish what they're?
Yes, it would.
Doing, and there can be less, excuse, for lack of a better word, offensive compared to what we're finding for M2?
Or possibly offensive with the next guy.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So why go for this one rather than that one?
Yeah, exactly.
M1 allows all the uses up to a light industrial-type use. It does not allow junkyards. It does not allow kennels or anything like that. It's.
But it specifically refers to self-storage facilities and warehouses.
So why are we talking about something other than M1?
M2 was the closest industrial zone to this site. It's where the VMV yard is, on the south side of Kentucky Avenue.
Would we still have the spot zoning for an M1 being there?
In my opinion, yes.
That's why I asked that. Okay.
I think what we've been reading about, like, from this storage, you know, that this is kind of a problem all the way across the country, because it's something new, like, you know, this type of storage, rather than just a non-climate-controlled storage. And I think sometimes they've said what they've asked for is like a special use permit, rather than a whole zone change, because it doesn't really change the zone. I don't know what I'm talking about, because I've never done this before, but that's just kind of what I've read in other parts of the United States they've done, because it really doesn't fit into what that is.
Yeah, we've got it. We've all got it.
Yeah, and it's just something we did fast, just to kind of, there's a historical building that kind of looked like that, and said that, you know, we'd want to do brick, and then some stuff goes, something that kind of went along with our building and just extended that much longer, so.
And the idea is, I was talking to my brother in Indianapolis, his storage facility in Indianapolis, the way it's really nice is that if you can drive into the building, you know, if you, if you had storage, you'd have a car, your car would open the door, you drive into the building, door shuts behind you. Now it's zero outside, it's 60 inside. You can unload your truck. Units on the left or the right, when you're empty, you, you pull through and exit through the garage door at the exit.
So it wouldn't be just garage door after garage door.
From the front of the building, it's basically, it's going to look really nice, kind of like our building does with raw interiors.
So what is the suggested solution for these people? I mean, what, what would be the best way to go?
To keep in accordance with the comp plan and state law, staff is making a recommendation to keep the zone in the same, or, which is now B3, to keep that zoning. Sometimes there's not an easy solution. I do try to work with applicants. Me and Mr. Durham have talked at length about it. But sometimes stat, our recommendation has to be a yes or no, and there's no gray in between, and unfortunately, this is one of those times where this is staff's recommendation is no.
Are there any instances of a conditional use permit being allowed in B3 for similar-type properties, of warehousing property?
No.
Because this sounds more like a warehouse than it does.
Right.
A self-storage facility.
There is no conditional use for a warehouse in the B3, because it's specifically laid out in the zoning ordinance. Those are only principally permitted in the M1 zone and M2 zones.
Is that gas station over there in, in a B, B zone in the corners of Kentucky?
Mercer's?
That's not gas station. It's a tire store.
Tire store.
Oh, yes, okay.
Paducah Tire.
Yeah, it's B3, that whole, yeah, everything.
So all of Kentucky Avenue on that inside is B3?
Yes.
But across the street is M2?
Yes, that's correct.
Is it M2 or, or heavy industrial?
It's M2. That, that is heavy industrial.
That is heavy industrial.
Well, I thought that was medium industrial.
My question would be, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm looking at this figure, and you own all of this property, am I correct? Over to the railroad state?
Yes.
Okay. So, what if, this is purely a what-if, you decided to change this property line and create a property line here and include this portion, you probably can't even see this, include this portion in this property and make it one lot, then it would be touching an M1, would it not?
It would be.
Be touching M2?
M2.
Be touching M2. I think it's to expand your application to include your existing property you have now, I think is what you're, you're saying, Mr. S.
I was, I was trying to make it.
Palatable.
Yes.
You own this?
Yes.
No, we own this, all of this, this triangle kind of piece. There's actually nothing really there. There is a building there, but it needs to be torn down.
That's the old robo car wash.
So we have like a retail business here. That was a south, all south of.
Our lot line goes up against the, yeah, like the railroad tracks and.
Yeah, what we were thinking is that you could drive through and then come out.
What is?
I mean, and he actually has.
But him, he was on the other side.
Showing it all as being commercial, but then they had this locked off and had that locked off.
I mean, this.
That's windshield.
That's windshield.
We didn't know.
Well, you're.
That's behind your building now, touches that.
It's that and that.
We don't have a plan, do we? We just have drawings.
Well, we have this, but it doesn't give us everything we need.
That would be good.
Okay. I didn't think we had a true survey. What did you discover, Dan? Do they go all the way to Kentucky?
No.
Do they do?
Yeah, we do. That old robo wash is not theirs. But our lot goes back to Kentucky.
Oh, so you don't own that property.
Okay, we were wondering.
One directly.
So they own these two.
Behind where our lot is, our empty lot, no.
So they do, well, they do touch Kentucky Avenue, so.
Yes. Not this lot, though. Their property does. Yeah, our other lot does, because we, yeah.
So that is an option, if you were to choose to attempt to.
Make all of it one property. About it, the property lines in between, so it's all one property.
Well, he said they own that.
Oh, that's all right.
That he owns this. Just trying to figure out an option.
Yeah, something.
Actually, there's a garage door on that right side of the building that drives all the way through. So I mean, it could maybe be utilized with it. If you're from, you can't, we don't use it as a garage door, and the.
it drives straight through to a garage door on the back that takes you out through the parking lot. I don't know if that helps, you know, I mean.
I think, so how do you go about changing the lot line?
Josh.
Well, I can answer that.
That would be, that would, Josh can help you with that.
It would have to be a completely new hearing, because what was advertised for the public tonight was just 1140. What we would need is a revised application to include your property, as well as this one, which I would have to re-advertise in the paper and re-notify the property owners within 200 feet.
Okay.
And then come back before the planning commission after those things have been done. Does that sound correct, Dan?
Mm-hmm. Well, she wanted to buy the old robo wash, and then they could buy that and put that together.
Would that be make it easier?
Oh, yeah, that would make it so much easier.
Yeah, that would.
Okay.
Then you wouldn't have to rezone your property.
Oh, really?
Even with the garage doors, it'd still be fine if they just wouldn't continue for it.
So would we need to table this, or to go ahead and act and close it out?
1140 was still.
Well, you're going to have to close out this.
Okay.
Right, one way or the other.
I do have, I do have one comment. You said this garage door thing and all that, that there's a curb. So that might be a state road, and it might be a problem with cutting the curb and all that.
Are you talking about a garage door on the property you currently have?
On our building, yeah, we don't use that as a garage door. It's closed off.
No, I'm talking about what you would build. It would have a garage door that is coming in from Broadway and leaving Kentucky. You know, if you ended up having, taking in that lot also, so you would drive through, you'd have storage, and it's on both sides. You know, you'd drive your car all the way through.
But you'd need to find out about that curb issue, about the.
Oh, yeah. Well, I don't know that that one.
No, you're talking about something different.
Yeah, I am. That one's, that one's connected to our building now, which we just not, I just wondered if that would help with the lot line by any way.
So if we purchased the lot, if we purchased the lot behind us, then we could do this? I wouldn't want to purchase it and then turn out.
Or, well.
So I'd be stuck with two lots I couldn't use.
There's two different ways, and.
I think that would be the issue, so.
Well.
They bought that, and then they just bring that down, and you're in two right across the street.
Yes, but, but there's still the chance the City Commission may not.
Yeah, we do not have control over them.
That's all right.
We would have no control over them.
Perhaps the easiest thing, and you all chime in, please, is to, your existing piece of property, where the Serv Pro is, make that part of your application, since it already touches M2.
Right. And then abolish that line.
Well, there wouldn't be an abolishment needed.
Absolutely, that's right.
But it would certainly be a good economic development thing to eliminate the robo wash and.
Well, we considered that.
Yes.
And actually, I've talked to the person that owns it, and he just wanted a little more than, quite a bit more than I paid.
A little more than you want, yeah.
That happens sometimes.
Yes.
So he thinks it's, you know, and that's fine, if we can get it, and we might go ahead and try and.
So it sounds to me like it was going on a very negative part here, until Kathy came up with, well, maybe. So I'm glad we talked this all through, and Kathy, I think you'd be complimented.
Well, but we will have to vote on it.
Exactly.
But we hope that it comes back in a different form.
Right.
Okay.
Do we, do we need to withdraw the motion?
It doesn't matter.
Well, I think it does.
And the thing is, if, if we, if we vote it down, you know, normally you've got six months, I think, before we can reconsider it. But we can agree to reconsider, we can agree to.
Reconsider it sooner.
Six months if we do it by agreement.
But for some reason, it feels better to me to withdraw it rather than to vote it down. I mean, more, more information has come up.
It alleviates the negative connotations.
Exactly. I just don't, I don't want to vote it down.
We've got a motion on the floor, so.
Can I amend them, or can we change the motion to make it, to withdraw it? Or can I?
What you can do is, if you wish.
Robert Schur's board.
Table it, maybe.
It's all right.
But then it doesn't provide for the advertisement of it.
No, that's true.
We've got, I mean, we're totally changing it.
Yeah, I know, and that's why I say it'd be easier just to go ahead and say, okay, we're not going to allow this, or come back before, so something else.
But would we have to amend it to say it's without prejudice, and so we can look at it again?
Just when it comes before you, you could.
We can agree to it, okay.
Because it won't be the same thing coming back again, anyway. It'll be totally different.
Yeah, it's a little different.
A little different, so.
Yeah, so there'll be a change.
Just trying to eliminate speed bumps.
And do you think you would be applying for an M1 instead of an M2?
Yes.
If that's.
Or.
Whatever.
Can you move to withdraw your previous motion, then?
I'm not sure about that.
I would need more than a 30-second.
I'm sorry, I'm asking you to make a decision here, and so you need to think a little about this.
Yeah, there would need to be some thought.
Put into it.
Put into it, and I'm not sure is the correct answer I've got.
Maybe?
Could be.
Maybe.
Okay.
It would seem like the M1 would fit better on Broadway than having an M2 on Broadway.
Right.
True.
And the M1 would allow this type of structure, then?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I guess you could go ahead and say, hey, we withdraw this.
And we'll come back later.
And then just come back later.
Absolutely.
We'll withdraw.
Yeah, that would be good.
All right. So the, what the minutes need to be, what they need to say is that the Durham's have withdrawn their application.
Petitioner has withdrawn.
Yeah, and then you can bring, they can bring whatever.
And that keeps us waiting six months, or we did a whole new thing, and we're not late?
No, six months.
Okay.
Options are, you try to purchase the lot behind us, which.
Connected to the, our lot.
Or.
Hope the owner's not watching this tonight.
Yeah. Price is willing.
Completely transparent.
One thing to keep in mind, too, is that to change the zone, the City Commission will have to pass an ordinance and have first and second reading. This body makes a recommendation to the City Commission on how we would like to see them act upon it. That doesn't mean they will. So if you purchase a piece of property, and ultimately it gets to City Commission, and they say no, you've bought another piece of property that you really didn't need.
And having the other piece of property doesn't make it more likely than what we already have, just trying to make one lot of what we already have, because it goes back.
The purpose is, is to have a piece of property that's directly adjacent to the zone that you want to make it.
Right.
So you own a piece of property already that touches M2.
Or a similar zone.
So it's not making it, okay.
You know, thing that would, would make sense.
And an M1 is a good bridge between the two and the B3.
I think so, too.
You know, that word junkyard, that turns everybody.
Yeah, that's the one, that's a real turnoff for people.
It won't be junkyard.
Thank you for your efforts.
Oh, thank you very much.
So did we put words in your mouth, or did we hear that you wished to withdraw?
We're withdrawing.
Okay.
Yeah, we're withdrawing. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much for being here.
Okay.
Mr. Shadle, you have the next case?
Yes, I do. I move that this commission adopt a resolution forwarding a positive recommendation to the City Commission to close an alley running parallel between Murray Avenue and Brown Street east of DAV Drive.
Second.
Second by Ben Berry.
This is a 15-foot alley. Only about a third of it is maintained in gravel for a garage. Mr. Caldwell would like to expand his business. So after the alley's closed, you all will see another subdivision plat come through to clean up all the property lines.
So are we recommending closing the entire alley, or just a portion of the alley?
It's the entire alley. The crosshatched portion you see is going to remain as an ingress egress easement to serve the adjacent properties touching that easement. That's the portion that's gravelled right now. The rest of it is undeveloped.
Okay. And all the other property owners are compliant with this?
Everyone has signed the plat, and at one time, we made revisions, going to have to get more signatures, but everyone's signed the application except the George Etheridge estate. We can't find, we can't find the heirs.
Well, that's in that, okay, lot, too.
Mm-hmm. And there is a provision for closing the alley when all property owners do not sign, and Mr. Caldwell has signed that application, or that form.
Okay.
Take your responsibility if the, if they try to come back onto the city.
Josh, there's no negative effects on the city, as far as access.
No. The ingress egress easement will keep that access open to the back of that garage at 1139 Murray Avenue.
And the rest is totally unimproved. I mean, it's just like.
So the alley.
The rest of the alley's unimproved.
Yes.
But the dedication, the entire alley, will go to 50/50 to each owner of the respective, and then there will be an easement created in that, for those first third of it?
Yes, that's correct.
I fully understand that. Thank you.
Are there any more questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Ben Berry?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Chair Crisillas?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke, you have our last item of business?
I move that this commission adopt a resolution forwarding a positive recommendation to the City Commission to close DAV Drive between 1616 and 1700 Urban Cobb Drive north of Chamblin Avenue.
Second.
Second by Ben Berry.
This is to close basically a little stubbed street that is not being maintained by the city. The only entity that uses this is C Oil Company, and after this is closed, they're going to abolish their entire property lines. And Ricky can add to that if you need to.
There are some utilities within this right-of-way. There's a storm sewer, and there's a gas line within this, and we're providing for a 20-foot-wide utility easement along the western portion of this right-of-way that's being closed to accommodate those utilities.
Any provisions to try to clean up the, the state highway easement, or is that more trouble than it would be worth?
You're talking about the portion that kind of bumps out?
Urban Cobb, yes.
Yeah, that, we felt like that, that was right-of-way, part of that was obtained by the state, so it, it's not easy to get or acquire right-of-way back from them.
So it'll be more trouble than it would be worth?
Well, you're looking at a year-plus process.
Aren't they still using this as kind of a driveway, so to speak?
C Oil uses it.
Yes, exactly. So I don't think they would really want to close it, would they? I mean.
You're talking about the highway that a little.
I mean, in other words, close up the entrance.
Yeah, no, I don't think they have any plans to close entrances.
Would the state recognize that as a curb cut rather than a street?
That's a good question. I don't know.
It's already there. I'm just curious in how their thought process.
Well, any site development plans that would come about for this site would have to be reviewed by the Highway Department, as well as the city.
Okay.